...a work session for the Mayor and City Council for Monday, October seventeen, two thousand twenty-two to four. We do have a forum. Mr. Jones has advised us he will be running late this evening. So he should join us a little bit later on. Something about lost A C T test or something. Item three are citizens with input. Are there any citizens here this evening that would like to address mayor or council at this time? Thank you. Item four on our agenda are items for review and discussion. Item four A is the office of the city attorney. Item four A one is a discussion about the P T V ordinance. Ms. Newby.
All right, what about now?
That's good.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you'll recall, we have discussed previously about P T Vs or personal transportation vehicles. I think we've had two other discussions. The first just introducing the topic and seeing if there was interest or gauging the interest in providing a way in our city for P T Vs, personal transportation vehicles, to be operated legally. And so following the feedback that we received from council and in consultation with the police department and Chief Edridge, we have prepared an initial draft ordinance for your review. I wanted to go over the initial draft, highlight the few additional requirements that are in the draft for your consideration. Those have actually been highlighted in yellow for you, but I'll go over them briefly in a moment. But just for tonight's purposes, I wanted to review the initial draft ordinance for discussion. Ms. Wharton is here to show us through our G I S mapping system a map of the current areas where P T Vs would be allowed once the ordinance is adopted and the signs posted in accordance with Georgia law. And then we can proceed from there to show you to talk about where the signs would have to be posted and then talk about connectivity. So to get started, there should be a copy of the draft ordinance that was out here workstation. The definitions just track Georgia law and talk about how a P T B is a four-wheel vehicle, but it is only capable of a maximum speed of less than twenty miles per hour. And it's capable of transporting not more than eight persons. Authorized streets would only be those streets that had a posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour or less that is not designated as a part of either a state or federal highway system and hasn't been designated specifically by the law as an unauthorized street. So the most important requirements that I wanted to go over were the registration permits. At our last discussion, we talked about how we did think that P T Vs needed to be registered with the city, that that would be done through the period police department. And Chief Edridge and his group will inspect the P T Vs and then would issue a decal. So whenever they file for a registration, the requirements that they have to meet are that it has to be the person who is the owner filing the permit. They have to submit an application that will create that includes the name and address of the owner, make a model of the P T V, the current driver's license number of the owner, and any other additional information that may be needed relative to the owner of the P T V. We discussed that the registration application is tracked to say shall be accompanied by a fee not to exceed fifteen dollars, but as determined by mayor and council and listed on the city's speed schedule. The ordinance is prepared this way so that in the future, should the city need to start collecting a fee, it would already be authorized. I know that the city manager recommended that there not be a fee collected for these decals, but we wanted to leave that discretion in there in case there's any additional. Like for example, we get up to the sign that we're going to have to post in case that fee really needs to be covered, sorry, to go towards paying for the cost of those signs. I can tell the city manager wants to comment on this, so.
No, that's my only question is you have fifty. Does state law have a maximum of fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yes. So letter F there is an additional requirement that I think the feedback from council and in discussing with Chief Edridge was that the registration application shall be accompanied by evidence of personal liability insurance coverage. And so we thought that in looking at a survey of other cities in drafting this ordinance, they have this requirement for people who are going to operate their P T Vs on the road to carry minimum liability insurance, just like you would if you were operating a motor vehicle. So I do want to point out again that this would be just an additional requirement that we would be adding. The registration shall be effective for a period of three years unless it's revoked or if the P T V is transferred to a new owner. If it's transferred, the new owner would have to file for a permit themselves. The next section just deals with revocation and outlines that basically your permit can be revoked if you, if a permit holder no longer holds a valid driver's license or if they fail to abide by our rules and regulations relative to operating the P T Vs on city streets. Section eighteen is the operation regulations. Again, it can only be operated on an authorized street. You have to be sixteen years of age or older and have a valid motor vehicle license. That's consistent with state law. You have to abide by all traffic regulations, again, consistent with state law. Letter D requiring the current weekly liability insurance is optional. That's what is the recommendation before council to include in this ordinance. The other, every item there until you get down to letter M, all are consistent with the requirements of state law. That you can't, you can't have more than eight persons on a P T V at a time, not to operate it on a sidewalk. But basically when you're operating a P T V, it's just like you're operating a car. You can't overtake another P T V or ride side by side in the same lane. You have to continue to follow all motor vehicle traffic regulations. Letter L says that all drivers and passengers must remain seated at all times and no person may sit in the driver's lap during the operation of the P T V. And then M, which comes as a recommendation after a consultation with the police department, is that all drivers transporting a child under six years of age shall provide for the proper restraint of such child with a safety belt and/or a child-passenger restraining system appropriate for such child's height and weight and its proof by the federal motor vehicle safety standard two thirteen. That's the language that's tracked in state law for requirement of child restraining, child restraining systems. And then section eighteen dash eighty-one, the vehicle standards and equipment. All of these are copied exactly from state law as far as the wheels, the growth speed, the growth speed of the weight capacity, braking system, including a parking brake, reverse warning device, main power switch, headlamps, reflex reflectors, taillamps. Letter K is an additional item that came back from feedback from one of our discussions with council about requiring these slow-moving vehicle emblem or either an amber strobe light. And then a horn, a rear view mirror, safety warning labels and hip restraints or handholds. Those are all state requirements. In letter O, I'll point out that's highlighted there, the safety belts are required when transporting a child under the age of six as provided in section eighteen dash eighty. And those are the highlights of currently what's section eighteen eighty-two provides just a general statement that the city is not taking a position relative to liability if any accidents occur. You know, adoption of this ordinance is not to be relied on as a determination that it's safe to operate a P T V on public roads. But we're merely addressing the safety issues and even for the adoption of this ordinance. And then eighteen dash eighty-three addressing the penalties that can be issued in the form of citations to come before municipal court should an operator of a P T V be found in violation of anything in our ordinance or in violation of a traffic regulation.
Questions, councilman, about this ordinance, concerns? Yes, sir?
May I mention this made statement? Do you think you want me to came down at night time?
Yes, sir. They can be operated at nighttime. They just have to have the headlamp and taillight requirements. But one of the additional safety issues or equipment that we added in there was the slow-moving vehicle reflective emblem to be on the back as well as the, I think it's called reflective reflectors or something like that are required on the side. That's a requirement of state law, but the additional emblem on the back that's usually reflective was added as well.
Also, I noticed that we may have had to be sixteen years old to have a license in the car.
Yes, sir. That's a requirement under state law. There was once a time where you adopted an ordinance, I think it was prior to two thousand twelve, that you could have set a lower driving age limit. But since we're adopting our ordinance after that date, we're required to follow the state law, which is sixteen years of age or older and to have a valid driver's license.
I wonder how concerned about sometimes when families have a child who are young, they know how to drive. A lot of them are driving, so in our honor, we state that a younger child cannot drive if he has a sixteen-year-old license.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
So the next thing that you had in your packet for me was a picture that looks like this. We would have some, a slight modification. We would remove the golf clubs. But under state law, there is a requirement that we have to post a sign at every highway, which is part of the state highway system at the point that intersects with our corporate city limits. The sign has to be at least twenty-four by thirty inches in area. And it's meant to warn approaching motorists that P T Vs are authorized for use on public streets. So this is an example of the type of sign that we would have to post. And our ordinance would not go into effect until these signs are posted. And that's consistent with state law of forty dash six dash three thirty-one C. I think at this point would be a good time to have Ms. Wharton go over, or I can go over. She's got the map pulled up for us. You also have a hard copy of this map, so it might be easier for you to look at. But currently on the screen, thanks to our G I S mapping consultants and Ms. Wharton, are all of the city streets in Perry that are identified. If they're green in color, that means that the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour or less. Yellow is where they are thirty miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour. And red is where they are forty miles an hour or more. So this first map is meant to show you that should we move forward with adopting an ordinance at your meeting in November, after any additional feedback or questions or concerns that we need to address. Once we get the signs posted, then anyone who owns a P T V can operate it on a street that is in Perry where the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour or less. Can you go to the next map? The next, the next map that Holly's going to pull up, and this is page two in front of you, is shows where we have to post all of these signs. And I believe we came up with a total of thirteen. Is that right, Holly? So we just marked it by this emblem for the warning sign shows the golf cart. But that's the actual picture that you have. This is the picture of the sign that we would have posted. We just used these emblems because it was easier on the map to show you where we have to have this warning for all of the motorists entering the city limits. So the next item that we wanted to, do y'all have any questions about where the signs have to be posted, what they look like for the first map? Yes?
Question? Have we made a decision on every place in green or have we, I guess, I guess in my mind, I just thought that downtown area.
Well, I think that's bad.
Okay.
Let me see if the proposed changes are.
So to that point, well, there's one thing first. If, if all of the reds that are in green is too much, if you want it to be limited to only a certain downtown area, then we can definitely revise the ordinance to limit P T Vs to just those streets and identify those specifically as authorized streets. To be an authorized street, it does need to be a speed limit of twenty-five or less. So what we can do is if, if council is okay with people in their neighborhoods where the speed limit is less than twenty-five operating with P T Vs on the streets, then we can leave it as drafted, which says any street that's twenty-five miles an hour or less would be an authorized street. But the next step was to ask for council's approval for us to, us being city staff, to proceed with working on connectivity. Because as you can see from this map, there are lots of areas in green, but they can't get into downtown because they would either have to cross a street that's a state route or there's not a way to get in because they are blocked, if you will, by other streets where the speed limit is greater than twenty-five. And so to use Mr. Gilmore's famous phasing of projects, we think that connectivity would kind of be phase two of moving the P T V connectivity in the city forward if that's council's decision. And so that would include myself, Ms. Wharton, Chief Edridge, working with Chad McMurray and the Georgia Department of Transportation to identify points of connectivity where G DOT would approve active grade crossings. Because we know that if we can have a designated crossing along Swift Street, that's one area that would be able to connect a lot of the other areas to downtown. But tonight, we basically wanted to go over the initial draft of the ordinance, see if it met your expectations or if there was anything else that you would like to see added or removed to show you the current map of where these could be operated once we pass the ordinance and then also have the signs posted. And then just to see what your appetite was for moving forward with adopting the ordinance, having the signs posted, and then working on connectivity. So I know that's a lot, but I'm happy to answer any questions or if you have any questions for Chief Edridge or Mr. McMurray, and they're here as well.
But if there's some recommendation of changing all of the downtown streets to twenty-five miles an hour that would allow people for that connectivity, is that going to be part of the overall plan in the future?
Yes, sir. And I apologize for not bringing that up. That would be kind of part of our phasing in of connectivity would be the recommendation to change the speed limits of Main Street to at Crossroads Park up until it intersects with your Portman Hodges Boulevard to twenty-five miles an hour. And then also just in the downtown area to change Jernigan, Commerce Bowl, Baker Road, First, Carroll Street and Washington Street to twenty-five miles an hour. So at least all of the downtown area will have that connectivity.
Which will have a lot of connectivity to smoke and downtown tougher in those areas that can get into downtown at that point. I'd love that crossing, I think, to be appropriate place.
Counselor?
Well, I see it as basically, it's like, it's a P T V, it's a age, people, it's looking a lot like. I see too much, can't go, can't go, can't.
No, that's, all that, that's the current, I mean, what they're proposing is that we change the entire downtown so they can go. And then also, but that's the next step of moving forward.
Put this in the top of it, just like in the whiteout, everybody hoping for you to grow for sixteen and drive. And that's what I can't say, it's what I can't do. I don't have a, a rule, but I see it's law, people, children.
Understand that, but state law says you have to be sixteen years old to operate it. And so. I'm just asking about the state law.
My answer.
Other questions or concerns? Would you like for Ms. Newby to move forward with this recommendation of the ordinance that she's presented this evening?
Mayor Kent, Mr. Hunt, just to address one thing. Currently, if we don't put a P T V ordinance in place, then everyone that you see who's operating them on public streets are doing so illegally. State law requires that local governments are authorized to allow people to operate them on public streets. But to do so, we have to pass the ordinance. And it, well, state law also requires that to operate a P T V on a public street, that they're required to possess a valid driver's license. So that's why there's, that's the recommendation.
I'm not arguing with what I think is going to be.
Yes, sir.
So would you please move forward with sport one as far as the current stuff? Do you have anything else?
I guess did that clue the approval for us to proceed working on a connectivity plan for contacting the Georgia Department of Transportation for those crossings that would be needed to open up for the city?
That's what I would think, that you're wanting them to make them as readily available as possible to be used in our downtown events and those sort of.
Mayor, I'd also like to suggest with your authorization under the ordinance to include the adjustment for the downtown because that's where we're going to have to major focus, I think, on people with initial golf carts. And then proceed with additional phasing in for the connectivity as the information becomes available.
I think that you're asking us to go ahead and move forward with the twenty-five miles an hour downtown. I think that's part of the authorization that they're looking for moving forward. And that that will give a great deal of connectivity. It will still leave some of our areas out that have to cross over Swift Street to get into downtown or the connectivity of maybe our night alliance and some of those. But that's what Chief Edridge is going to do with Ms. Newby to try to determine how do you, how do you make that work in order to require us with G DOT. So if it will take G DOT approval.
So to confirm, we'll move forward with presenting this ordinance for a first reading out here with the first meeting. In the meantime, we'll force works to have the signs prepared so they'll be ready to be posted upon adoption. And then also coordinate with appropriate staff to have the speed limits changed for the downtown area to twenty-five miles an hour. And then work with the group that we outlined to come forward with another connectivity plan to establish crossings for your approval.
That's what I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
And it won't be until November the first?
That'll be the first reading, yes, sir.
Okay. Very good.
Can I just ask one question because we're close to finishing. Did you, did you say that it would not be allowed to be on sidewalks? So any new sidewalks that we might, we have constructed to be extra wide for this purpose today? And now we talked about, I haven't talked about the Hudson Street sidewalk, but it was going to be forty-five or whatever.
I think it's going to, that is going to be an all-transportation A T L route. If that would allow them out there, that would be purposely put in, not just typical eight-foot wide sidewalk.
And should we get to a point where we do have a different type of alternate transportation path? alternate transportation path established, um, that I don't think would qualify as a sidewalk, but we can also make any type of amendment in the future that we need to if there are certain, um, larger, like dedicated sidewalks to facilitate, um, PTVs?
Great, thank you, Ms. Newby. Uh, we've had some guests come in, is that if there's anyone here that's going to attend our planning and zoning meeting, that's not going to be here this evening, uh, that's going to be at City Hall. But if you're here just to observe our work session, welcome. We're glad to, glad to have you here. Item four B is the Community Development Department. Four B one is the L-ME two thousand and twenty-three street. That's Mr. McMurrayan?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Councilor. Oh, I'm back again for an annual L-ME list. Um, currently, we are wrapping up our L-ME two thousand and twenty-two. And in that project, we will be making a, a major point repair on Jackson Lane. So I did want, want you to be aware of that project as it's going to work. Um, that is a, a portion of Jackson Lane which had some damages and this, this repair has been made to Jackson Lane. So keep in mind, I will bring up Jackson Lane, we're talking about next year. Um, but I have provided you a list of the top twenty-two streets this year that have been reviewed as, uh, needing some attention. Uh, and you may remember our local maintenance improvement grant is, um, thirty percent match where, um, the city matches thirty percent and the rest of the money is funded by the GDOT, uh, L-ME program. We have a total budget of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, uh, seventy-one dollars and thirty-three cents going into two thousand and twenty-three. And, um, I have identified, uh, Plaza Connector. Uh, this is at River Road Plaza Drive. As, uh, number one, Plaza Drive from San Juan to the Inn. Main Street at Jernigan to the railroad. Oldfield Lane, that's from Swift Street to Horton. Uh, Tucker, the east part of Tucker from Pine Hill to Key Drive. Piner Street from Woodland Drive to Duncan Avenue. And Hillcrest from Tucker Road to Catter Circle. Um, as being the most severe of these, Jackson Lane was done in this list, but it had the, like I mentioned, that major point repair. It could be added here in place of one of these others if we wanted to complete the paving of that street. But, um, doing the, the review of this and it being a residential street, I would recommend that next year. Um, however, these did score the highest. I also have a guardrail listed on this on Elko Road as we have a very large drop off in, in a ditch. Uh, L-ME funds do, um, acknowledge safety improvements, and a guardrail would be considered a safety improvement in this case. So, uh, this is my recommendation moving forward for two thousand and twenty-three. If you agree or you'd like to see changes to this list, I can entertain that, make some changes, and then we can submit a application based on the, the listed streets for two thousand and twenty-three. Questions, comments?
I have a question, uh, when we did, uh.
Mike, come on, please. Thank you.
When we did a trust initiative activity down on Sunshine, there is a split all the way across Sunshine. Uh, and so I was wondering when that could be added? It was, uh, at the Oakfield Park on that street where the park is, and I think it's, oh, uh, it goes all the way across Sunshine.
Okay. Well, a little background on Sunshine is we have had some major work on Sunshine with sewer line repairs and water relocation. We also have currently a sidewalk project that's wrapping up, should be wrapping up for the end of this week and next week. Uh, Sunshine is one that has built the, the, I guess, the foresight here, uh, but it, I recommend it be reviewed in the next round of funding, uh, which all these projects should have repairs completed. Now, if there's major point repairs, I think we address them case by case. For example, a crack or a, uh, a sink hole or something like that showing up in the road and we, we fix them immediately and then schedule these major, uh, repairs, uh, for the next month would be my recommendation, but I'd surely add that to the list and we can review it.
Could I ask you to look at the envision of Swift? Uh, I guess in Swift and Jackson possibly where this concrete truck turned over? And that accident, there's quite an impression there in that. And so I don't know if we can address it or not, so.
I'll be glad to.
Do you have a question about, uh, the preserve? It just says various places. Is this because of new streets being finished or is it because of their streets being, um, kind of torn up with new construction? And, and, you know, all kinds of stuff?
Most of the preserve, uh, the, the various locations of the preserve that have been brought to my attention are due to the original pavement that was put down. I believe it was two thousand and six. Uh, there was a bank of foreclosure in that area. Those streets were left in place for many years with, um, I guess not neglected, but no maintenance done. And over time, they've suffered some, some damages. Now, keep in mind, residential streets are scored differently than arterials, collectors, uh, your T streets of course, and, and major routes for buses and, and other traffic. So, um, in other words, collectors and arterials have a higher severity rating, which score them to give you page and more attention on them than the residential streets with, uh, like period reserves. Uh, period reserves in a good shape for handling residential traffic, um, at low numbers, but we are watching, uh, period reserves.
Other questions?
Do, do we have here any plans to move forward with this recommendation? And I think that would take a look.
I'm sorry, Jen, just to work that tomorrow, because you do have to hold on.
Yes, very well.
Also, one, one, one more note to add. Uh, every year, we've seen a lot of fluctuation with bid numbers here recently. So i- if bid numbers come in low, so we get a good bid next year, we may be able to add additional street or some safety, uh, improvements in the city. If the bid numbers come in and they're, they're high, uh, since we experienced some higher ones this year, uh, then we may have to look at dropping something to keep a different funding amount. So, uh, this is the application which we're beginning. These are our number one targets, and we need to stay on track of those. However, there could be some variation in the bids.
Other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Item four C is the Finance Department. Four C wants this discussion of an acquisition of pickup trucks. Mr. Worth?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor Council, I'd like to do again with an opportunity to purchase a couple of those model twenty-twenty-two year pickup trucks. Uh, these were identified at a local dealer. Uh, these will actually be Mavericks, which are the smaller trucks. The city's never bought a couple of these before, but we're going to try these out. Uh, Community Development, uh, is scheduled to get a couple of new pickup trucks, and, uh, they think these will meet their needs. Uh, so staff's recommendation would be that we purchase, uh, two Maver- two Mavericks from Phil Grand and Ford here, uh, in the amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, if you all incur with that, that will be on your, uh, agenda for tomorrow.
Councilmembers? Okay.
Any more questions, please? I forget about this one. Are these car trucks going, uh, continue to roll as long as they would if they bought next year?
Uh, I would assume that if we buy them this year, it would just replace them a year earlier than if we bought them next year. Uh, one of these trucks is for a new position, so it actually doesn't exist. We don't have that truck yet. And the other one is for a, a truck that, uh, has actually broken down and is a longer in service for filling it with a, uh, with a spare at the moment for that position. Um, so I, I guess the answer would be yes, if we bought it a year from now, we would, we would have it another year out. Um, is that it's a question?
I think it does, okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you. Item four D is the review of Macon Road corridor rezoning request. Um, councilmembers, when I was in your seat, uh, as a council member, one of the things that I disliked the most was having to make a decision, especially a very important decision, um, not feeling that I have all of the information or there's additional questions. And so I felt like it was very important, given the amount of information that was provided at our, uh, hearing the other night, that we go back through Macon Road because whatever decision this council makes relative to rezoning all of Macon Road, rezoning part of Macon Road, rezoning one site of Macon Road, all of that's going to have a significant impact on where we go in the future. Um, one of, every meeting I go to, there are two consistent questions that I get. And I think you get the same thing, and it's, you got all this growth going on here and here. What are you going to do to protect the quality of life that I currently enjoy? And the other thing is how are you going to manage growth? And so this will be a decision that this council makes on how you're going to manage growth in the future. And you have a multitude of, of options when you're looking at what you may want to do and may not want to do. And I'm not sure that those options were completely understood. And so this, my, Ms. Newby is here this evening, uh, to answer any legal questions you have. Mr. Wood will definitely answer any questions you have relative to community development. And as far as policy, I'm sure that Mr. Smith or Mr. Gilmore can answer questions like that you may have. But I think it's extremely important that all of us have a very clear understanding of what's being asked of you. And then you making your mind up on what you think is right for the citizens of Perry and what's right for the landowners. And that's, that's something you're going to have to think, think about. I don't have a vote in this, and you guys do, but I personally felt like if I was sitting on those chairs and I'm dealing in this on a day-to-day basis, I didn't think I had the information that I would need to make an informed decision. I felt like it would be, it would behoove me to walk you back through each one of those parcels out there quickly. I promise this will not be an eight-thirty meeting, uh, unless you make it an eight-thirty meeting. Uh, but I did want to walk through each one of the parcels, talk about what impact they have, and answer any question you may have. Uh, you've been provided with a, uh, Mr. Hunt, there in the blue book that's in front of you, you've been provided with each one of the parcels. I would like to run through those parcels, starting, we do have slides coming up, uh, that, uh, Mrs. Warren will have to, to look on the big picture. But you also have an actual photograph of every parcel and a layout of what that parcel looks like, it's in the blue book. And what I would encourage you to do as we go through each one of these parcels, if you have a question about that parcel or you have a question about legally what you can and cannot do in your decision-making, I would encourage you to ask those questions tonight. Any questions or concerns about what the crazy mayor's up to?
I understand.
About the crazy mayor?
I'm very surprised. Now, I was wondering if when we go through it and we see that, uh, just say the first one, it's, uh, currently R two and now it's going to be O I. Could we be told, okay, this will render this facility non-conforming? Or this will render this, uh, if we were to pass the O I, it would render this as it have to have a special possession or it's conditional or non-conforming or, you know, all that? I'd just like to know the effect on the person.
Can you, are you prepared?
Yes, Mayor, I can do that.
Okay, that'd be great. So let's get started, let's run through this. Uh, the first one is the St. Christopher's Church, it's at twelve-seven Macon Road. And as Ms. Peterson indicated, it's R two currently. And all of us scratch our head as to how a church is on an R two parcel, but I think it, when it was originally zoned probably fifty years ago, uh, it backed up to a subdivision, so it seemed logical that they, they made it R two. I mean, that's one of the questions I continually get is where did the original zoning come from? And some, as our history tells us, um, the Berkshire property was zoned over seventy years ago. And so it's set there at seventy years, so it's just, you know, there's no telling at that point in time what decision was made on those properties. Does he have any questions on, do you want to know about whether it's non-conforming? Can you address that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, um, the St. Christopher's Temple Church would be, uh, continue as a conforming use under the Office Institutional District.
I don't have any idea, I don't know that it would because it operates as, it is a church, it's operating as a church, and it'll operate within this conforming, as dead as I mean. So it, it's an R two, all they can do is build a single thing at home. So I don't, I don't, I don't have any way of telling you where the property values are going to go up or go down because it's depending on what the demand is on that piece of property. I don't know that, I can't, I can't make that decision. I, that all depends on the market. All I'm trying to do is go through, be look at what, what effect the status is for, so I mean. Okay. And the next one is added treasures. It's a fresh shop, it's parked, it's on C two. The recommendation is to go to O I.
And I'm assuming that this is associated with the church?
It is.
Um, and therefore it would be a conforming use. If it were separate from the church, it would not be conforming under the Office Institutional District. As it is a shop.
Okay, questions? Next is Crossroad Medical, again, this is C two. This is a office park, uh, that exists today and the recommendation is to take it to Office Institutional.
And the uses of this property would remain conforming?
The next is, uh, sort of triplexes, they're at twelve-fifteen and twelve-seventeen Macon Road. They're both, uh, listed as C two. Um, the recommendation is O I, as everyone knows. Uh, these would be what, Mr. Wood?
These would remain conforming. And we do allow, propose to allow in the Office Institutional District faulty family dwelling units with less than seven units per lot. And so these would remain conforming.
So that is a conforming use in areas duplexes or triplexes would be a conforming use going forward. Twelve-nineteen Macon Road is Eldwood Wakes's Insurance Agency. And you, I think everybody knows where that is, it backs up to that subdivision. It's currently zoned C two and recommendation is O I.
And the use would remain conforming?
Uh, then we have the total training, it's thirteen hundred Macon Road. It's currently C two and the recommendation is to go to O I.
And this will remain conforming as well?
This is a conforming use. Next door to that is thirteen oh-two Macon Road. It is an undeveloped parcel and it's C two and it's recommended to go to O I. Questions on any of these? This is your opportunity, because I, like I said, maybe I'm just a slow learner, but there was a whole lot of information provided at the end of the night. The next is Patterson Power Drastic Clinic, it's a C2, it's currently operated as a doctor's office, and the recommendation is to go to OI.
And it would remain conforming?
Remain conforming. Next is Summit Physical Therapy, it's C2, and it's recommended to go to OI, it's a doctor's office.
And would remain conforming?
Next is the U.S. Post Office, and it's listed as C2, it's recommended to go by OI.
And would remain conforming?
Next is an undeveloped parcel on the other side of the road, it's listed as C2, general recommendation is to go to OI on that piece of property.
The undeveloped ones, I guess they, it makes it more challenging to me, there's not something there to make, you know, to make a decision about, it's undeveloped lands haven't been developed, so...
But I think, but I think that's the reason, because we don't know what's going to go there. My concern is if we, if we do not pay close attention to C2, you can end up with another core dehodges, and that's exactly how it evolved. All of us have heartburn because of the way core dehodges looks, it's because nobody controlled the growth out there, and anybody that wanted to build this, that, or the other was allowed to. And that, that's, you know, that's the question that would be placed there. And so that's, you are right. Now, one of the discussion items last week was Mrs. Thompson's high clinic therapy. That is not included in this package. I mean, she was not affected, so I know that she came and said that we were going to cause her to lose half the value, but we're not doing anything on that piece of property. Do you want to address that, Mr. Wood?
Yes, so when we evaluated the corridor, we looked at the fact that at the, at the intersection of Corrigan Road and Macon Road, you have a gas station on one corner, you have Dr. Thompson's Medical High Clinic on the other corner, and then directly across the street is the annex for the Houston County Schools District. All of the school district property is G use, which is government use. But at that intersection on the other side, we definitely could not put, or didn't think it was appropriate to put the, the gas station, convenience store in Office Institutional. And therefore, we felt like it was really kind of a coincidence of intersection, and created sort of a node at that, at that intersection, that it was appropriate to leave those two parcels on either side of that intersection as C2.
The next one is eighteen hundred Macon Road, and that's the church, right, again, this is one of those strange things, it backs up to the subdivision, it's setting on an R1, single-family residential lot, so the recommendation is to go to OI.
And it would remain conforming?
The next two parcels are eighteen oh eight and eighteen twelve Macon Road, no, I'm sorry, it's eighteen oh eight and eighteen ten Macon Road, these are two lots that are both C2 lots, and the recommendation is to go to OI on those. Next is the Sigma Defense System, which is currently C2, the recommendation is that we go to OI on that one Office Institutional. And they also own the lot next door, which is eighteen fourteen, that's an undeveloped lot. My understanding is that their contention is to expand their operation into that parcel.
And this is, this operates as a testing laboratory, which would be conforming under the new zone?
Okay. The next is eighteen twenty-one Macon Road, and that's Special Blessings Learning Center. Again, it's an R3 family zoning, and our recommendation, given the operation is OI.
Mayor, this one and the next one, because of the recent changes to the residential zone classifications, by making the R3 a single-family residential district, this property and the next property are actually non-conforming at this point, and under the Office Institutional District, they would become conforming.
They would be conforming, okay. And you are addressing eighteen twenty-five Macon Road?
Yes.
As being non-conforming?
Yes, the two duplexes.
But if they go OI, they would be conforming at that point in time?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next is eighteen thirty Macon Road, this is the Farm Bureau operation, they're currently C dash two, recommendation is, given that they're an office, it would be OI.
And they would be conforming under the new zone?
Across the street, you have two operations, one is the President's Church, and the other is Trans Air Manufacturing. It's currently listed as M dash one, and recommendation to go to OI. Mr. Wood?
Yes, so the church is actually non-conforming in, in the M1 district, it would become conforming in the OI district. The Trans Air Manufacturing would be non-conforming under the Office Institutional District.
So what would that mean for them?
So they would be allowed to continue as they currently operate, they would be allowed to expand within the building itself, but not beyond the building, so they can add out to the building. And if they were to be damaged by more than fifty percent of their value by a hurricane, tornado, whatever, they would not be able to rebuild and reestablish that use.
I don't, I'm aware, this is not the time to discuss that part of what happens when you're non-conforming, but I do want us to look at that, not just for these, for this individual, but also further down the road where the storage units are. If I, I can see us, in a non-conforming use, not allowing someone to purchase more property and continue their storage, or whatever, or their, whatever he's doing back here. But when, and when it's a person's own property, I, and they become non-conforming through no fault of their own, we'd limit a person's ability to produce income if we don't let them expand the type of business that they're already in, not adding them to, but the type of business they're already in, own property they already own. That seems unfair to me. I know that's not what we're talking about right now, and that would be a different discussion, but just thought I'd stir that up a little bit.
Let me, let me ask you a question. My understanding was that, and this is just hearsay, that the individual that purchased this wanted to do some type of event in there, and we actually added that in so he could do that?
So, yes, so prior to the current owner purchasing the property, I did meet with him, and he did talk about doing, wanting to do some type of office warehouse type facility where contractors, that type of development, where contractor would have a small office, but the majority would be a warehouse space for, for business materials and that type of thing. And he also, I think at one point, there was some, someone looking to do some type of indoor entertainment in either the existing building or a new building. And so we have added, we went back and looked at the abuse table, and felt that it was appropriate in an Office Institutional District to allow those two uses, types of uses, by special exception, where council would look at a specific proposal in a specific location to determine if it's appropriate or not.
And, and I'm aware of that, and I'm glad we did that, because I knew that was, that's a new owner with a vision that was going to come there, so I'm glad that, you know, our changes didn't interfere with that. And that wasn't exactly the issue I was looking at, but more toward maybe with storage people who can't add more storage on their own property. I can see they maybe want to do, often can't repair shop out there, that's not what their other business is.
When we get to that, and I think we can look at the options that we have, Mr. Wood and I discussed that, there may be all purpose for us to deal with that.
I just, I just think that whole kind of, the rules that go along with non-conforming might be kind of restrictive for people that actually own that property, and their, their personal property rights, it just causes me to stop and add it at a second time. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may, at this point, I think it's a good time just to remind council that that is what zoning does, is that the balance that our law strikes is whether it's only a classification that substantially burdens a property owner, may be justified if it's substantially related to the benefit of the public health, welfare, safety, morality. So that's the balance that you're always weighing, whenever you're making a zoning classification or rezoning request, and that also comes into play with non-conforming uses as well, but that's the balance that they're trying to strike.
Again, I just want to make an announcement that if you're here for planning and zoning, this, that meeting is being held at downtown City Hall, but if you're here for our pre-council meeting, you're welcome, we're glad you're here. Hey Chief, can you help, there's a question about which meeting they should be at, so I don't want them to visit, planning and zoning, that's what they're looking here. There was a change in location today, so I apologize for that. Next is the ambulance service at Safe Thirty-Five Macon Road, and it's M1, recommendation going to OI. Mr. Wood?
And this would remain conforming?
Next is the Harbor Manor Personal Care Home, that's nineteen hundred Macon Road, currently C2, recommendation is to go to OI.
And this will remain conforming in either lot districts.
Next is an undeveloped parcel, says it belongs to Mr. Willie Keen, so. It's C2, and the recommendation is go to OI, and I would, I would refer everyone's looking at the picture, it is completely surrounded by Long Ridge subdivision, so I think they were, as often Doctor talks about over there, they were there first, and it depends on what goes in there, and the adverse effect it could have on those homeowners, so. Next is Boardwalk Storage, it's nineteen ten Macon Road, it's C2, and it is recommended to go to OI.
And this would become non-conforming under the OI district.
Mr. Jones?
This is the one, Mr. Wood, where plans have already been submitted for, for expansion, is that correct?
Yes, so earlier this year, late last year, I don't remember the exact date, the current owner submitted a proposal for special exception to expand the facility, and they have, that special exception was granted, and they have received their permits for the site load and for the building, for that new building, which is under construction now.
I would just add, given, given that being the case, I would add that regarding this parcel, I would share, Ms. Peterson's concerns on that.
But did he not also have an outline and intention of putting an additional five thousand square foot on the back?
That was not part of his original special exception application, that came forward recently.
Well, can you put that additional on back?
If it were some, if it, if you rezoned this to Office Institutional, he would not be able to do that.
Mr. Wood, you had some thoughts about with possible alternatives for this person?
Yes, Mayor, another option, because if the thought is that council is generally agreeable to him being able to expand, as long as it's only an expansion of the existing storage building, would be to rezon the property to C2 with the limited use of an existing self-service storage building. That way the property continued to remain in C2, but only for that limited use. So basically, he would be taking away all of the other uses that are in C2 as a form of protection, if you will, for the neighboring property owners, but still allowing the continued, I guess, development. And I don't know, Mr. Wood, without requiring additional special exception for any future?
Yes, it would.
So a special exception would still be required, even if it remains C2 for any future expansion, but that is a way to allow this property to expand, but not to expand beyond its current use.
That's, that would seem fair to me, since they're not purchasing additional parcels.
No, we're looking for compromises here, sir. Any other questions around? Next is, again, is an undeveloped property that is directly across the street, it's C2, again, I call your attention to that, sits right in the back door of the Long Ridge subdivision, and their parcels are right up against that, so I would ask that you take that into consideration as you're making your decision. Questions about that, please? The next is, this says Zero Macon Road, I'm not sure what, I guess there is such a, is it Zero Macon Road?
Well, there is no address, that's why it's, okay.
It's a, it's right there on Panther Path Drive, Dennis Store, I guess it's, Orphodonas is in the office behind that, so this is currently C2, and recommendation is to take it OI Office Institutional. And then the property behind it is one on by Panther Path Drive, it's C2, it's a dentist office, the recommendation is that it would remain as OI, is the recommendation going forward?
It would remain conforming.
So councilmembers, that concludes all the parcels that, that are on Macon Road that we're talking about. What questions or concerns may you have? Anything, options that you have, what you want to move forward with? No decision can be made tonight. This was solely an informational discussion, that I, I felt was very, very important to each and every one of us to have that opportunity to answer those questions. Any change that you want to make to this going forward, if, if you have an appetite to move forward with part of it, will require a second first reading. And that first reading would be November the first, at our council meeting there, and then the second reading would be November the fifteenth, so. If, if tomorrow evening, your, your motion would be that you would agree to OI, except maybe Boardwalk, I don't know what your thoughts are, then that would require us to go back, because that's a substantive change in this itself.
And Mayor, I would just add that, out of your discussion tomorrow, any type of changes that you want to see when we make that amendment ordinance, where a first reading will be November first, and then have a second reading and adoption on November fifteenth, you're still within the forty-five day window in which council has to take action on the petition, which is forty-five days from the date of your public hearing. So that deadline is November eighteenth.
Questions, council? This is your opportunity, like I said, I personally think this is probably I personally think this is probably one of the most important decisions that we have made as a council in a number of years, and it really will dictate where we're going to go in the future. And just asking for your consideration as we move forward with this. And it will be on the agenda tomorrow night, so. If you've got any questions or anything, feel free to call Mr. Newby or myself, or Mr. Gilmore, or Mr. Wood, relative to those questions, if you don't have them this evening.
So we have a second reading tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be an open forum like it was for the first reading? Those for, those against? I can't remember.
No, no, it's not a public hearing. It'll be the second reading. There will be a, an opportunity if anybody wants to make a comment relative to that, whether they're for or against it, but it will not, it will not be a public hearing that people can, you know, state their positions, because we already get that, so.
Well, I just have to explain, I see what we're trying to do, but I've spent a lot of time putting myself in other people's shoes and making decisions, and I've heard from, like you all heard last Tuesday, the concerns that some of them have, and it's, it's real to them. And so I'm, I'm, I think I'm about done with rezoning for a while, I'm saying. School board members talked about rezoning high schools, and how conflicted they've become with it, and I, I kind of feel their pain with all of this, so.
But that is one of the major roles of city council.
Yes, yes.
And, and also, I guess, forming the vision of what you want your city to be, because people will be doing the same thing that we're doing here tonight, looking back twenty years going, why did they make that decision? Why is that office building sitting on an R one lot? So I think that those, these are critical decisions that all of us have to make. It, it ain't easy, that's all I can say.
Mayor, if I may, I think that we are all, in our tenders in office, used to making zoning decisions all the time, and those zoning decisions, one way or another, do affect property values. I think perhaps, speaking from me, what is different in this scenario is that the normal process is a property owner will come in, petition planning and zoning for a zoning change, planning and zoning recommendations are denied, and then that comes to us for approval or denial. I think the difference here is the city is the one proposing change as opposed to a property owner, and for several of us, for me, that carries, you know, additional things to have to consider and work through. So my question, in particular for Mr. Newby, is there precedent for this in our city and other cities? Is this legal to do? If it's weird ones initiating the change versus property owner themselves?
Thank you.
So it is legal. While it may not have been common to the city in Perry, city initiated zoning is very common, especially whenever you have a city who has updated its comprehensive plan or its strategic plan, then typically staff are tasked with going through and reviewing whatever that plan is, whatever their future development path is of how they envision the city being developed, and if needed, to initiate this rezoning so that the properties aren't consistent with what you envision how that area will be developed. So one of the things that you're looking at tonight is just an example of that. And Mr. Wood may can speak more to this, but I believe that this application was prompted by staff in reviewing, based on our updated strategic plan and comprehensive plan, to bring before council parcels that in staff view, the zoning was not consistent with the way the area is being developed, or that the zoning wasn't consistent with uses that would be appropriate with the existing development. And so that, that's why we're here. Is there anything you have to add to that, Mr. Wood?
I would just, I would just add that this was initiated by the staff, but we did have a lot of discussion and then good with the planning commission that were making the application.
Yeah, so that reminds you, this came from the planning commission as a regulation based upon not only the visioning that we have, but also the strategic plan, the comprehensive plan that we have in place, and I would say that if, if we're, if we don't take the initiative to manage the growth, then I'm not sure why this council would ever make another zoning decision. You're, you're, at that time, you're saying, we will let it do whatever it's going to do, and we'll be satisfied with that, so. That, that's, that's the thing you got to think about, because if, if we're not going to work towards visioning and working on zoning, then coming from the land, it's only commission, I'm not sure what our value is. Other questions or comments relative to those? Yes? I don't know. I don't know many of your, your owners. The, the question was how many owners are objecting to the change, and I think, you know, I think we have flat in writing, I think it's what it was, I don't know off the top of my head, I have to go back.
We, we keep mentioning Corbin Highters. Is that coming down the pipe? To redo that, or we live it the way it is?
I don't know that, that hasn't been brought forth at all. I just know that we are constantly working on that out there, looking at some of the older hotels and things that are, that are fixed out there, so I don't know what the plan will be. I don't have a real, go ahead, Mr. Gilmore.
I'd just like to remind council, Corbin Highters has had some significant rezoning in his concept wise, where we went through the whole form base decision out there, to come back and address some of these issues and concerns that had been expressed through the planning commission.
That is right, because we did redo the entire Corbin Highters with form base cover, which had a significant impact on the landowners out there. And it's still affecting Corbin's form base cover. Other questions, Bob?
I will provide, I'll give that number for each time. Of the number of apartments.
He said he will provide it for you. The next thing I wanted to do was go through the apartments out there, because we, we have recommended, or the planning and commission has recommended, that we take all of those apartment complexes and put them in the appropriate multifamily residential zoning, because if we don't, they're non-conforming. Commodore Manor is the first, and that is at sixteen oh three Macon Road. That is a C one highway commercial, and the recommendation is to take it to RM dash two, which is our multifamily residential zoning, and it would be conforming at that time.
That's correct.
Next is the vacant parcel that's next door to Commodore Manor. I think they own this parcel, it's currently R dash three, and we're recommending to take it to RM dash two multifamily residential, it's a very small parcel that abuts to the apartment complex, and this would make it conforming. Next is Perry Heights Apartment Homes, seventeen oh one Macon Road. It's currently rezoned R dash three, and we're, the recommendation is to go to RM two, which would be multifamily for that, which would make it conforming.
Yes, this is another one of the properties that is, was affected because of the change in the residential districts, making the R three single-family rather than multifamily, and so this is currently non-conforming, and would become conforming in the D S I.
Next, we have Cameron Court Apartments, it's R dash three. Again, trying to put it, make it conforming by putting it into RM dash two. So these, these would be conforming uses.
Correct.
Next is Cameron Court Apartments, that again is at eighteen oh seven Macon Road. It's phase two, it's the back portion, if you will, on the other side of the creek. It's, it's on C dash two, and we would recommend that it go to R dash, to RM two multifamily residential. And that would make it conforming, would it not?
It would remain conforming, yes.
And next is the Winslow Place Apartments, it's two hundred Bristol Drive. It is R dash three, and we, the recommendation coming to us is RM dash two multifamily residential.
It'd be, it'd become conforming under the proposed change.
And then there's Berkshire Court Apartments, it's eighteen twenty Macon Road. Current zoning is C dash two. Recommendation is to take it to RM dash two multifamily to make it conforming.
Yes, it would remain conforming under the R, RM two.
Council members, do you have some questions about the taking those parcels to multifamily residential and making them conforming? And that, again, will be on our agenda tomorrow night for the second reading. I have accomplished my objective, is there any other questions or concerns? Any one of you have? Since you have all the experts in the room, answer those questions.
Is there a large enough parcel left out there that someone else might want to come along and build a multifamily residential community? Would they not be allowed to now because it would be O I? I mean, there's just a plethora of apartment complexes there, I wonder.
Well, there's one parcel that's twenty acres in there, but it's R dash two, and that's for single-family owners. And it's not, it's not covered by, it's conforming, so it's not covered by this at all. If in fact they were wanting to build apartments on it, they would have to come to council for a special exception, not only for zoning, but also for, they'd have to have it rezoned and then request a number of apartments over six. So that's a special exception that you're requiring. I think I said that right.
That's correct.
Other questions or comments? I told you, see, it's only six point, I got to it pretty quick. Item five, our council member item, is Miss Brian Grace. Dr. Albert. Mayor Frank Tann. Mr. Hunt. Ms. Peterson? Mr. Johnson? Welcome, Mr. Jones, glad you got your test.
Standardized testing is.
We have works here.
Yes.
Item six are department head and staff items. Mr. Gilmore?
I have none.
Mr. Schmitt?
No sir.
Newt Morris? Mr. Newby?
Very close.
Ms. Keen?
No sir.
Mr. Worthing, what do you think?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Wood?
No sir.
Chief?
No sir.
Chief Harper?
No sir.
Mr. Swan?
No sir.
I didn't see you at the bike rally, I thought you'd been there, I'm sorry. I get other obligations, I'm leaving. Your spitster? Mr. Warren, anything that you have for us to see? Ms. Garrett?
No sir.
Ms. Clark?
No sir.
Thank you, I think that's everybody in the house. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of real estate. Motion, insect, all completely, please, get ready and write in. We are in executive session at this time.